Good evening and welcome to the Barville School Committee. April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, six P. M. in the Barville High School Media Center, four twenty-five East Avenue, Harrisville, Rhode Island. All present, all the school committee members are present. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition.
Yeah.
I would ask for a motion to table recognition until our guests arrive.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Donison to table the second item agenda, seconded by Sylvia. We're waiting for our distinguished guests to arrive, so as soon as they do, we'll move on to that, back to that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then moving on, agenda item number three, consent agenda, approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting that was held March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, and as well the executive session, again, March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second. Motion made by Donison, seconded by?
Sean.
Sean, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Warrants and invoices.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five warrant number nine dated March, for March, dated April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, grand total expenditures, three million, forty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and three cents.
Second.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Jill, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, we don't have any bids tonight, so. All right, so now that our guests are all present, if you want to come up front?
Come on up. Have a seat, guys.
Yeah. Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mike, and he's going to give us a little background about the DECA program at the high school, so.
So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. As you know, we have some recognition tonight for our high school DECA students who were, earned some distinction across the board, really, in several categories in the Rhode Island State Career Development Conference that was recently held. And I'll move on to the International DECA Conference in Orlando. Just a little detail about what DECA is, really, it's a student organization that prepares students for the workplace in finance, hospitality, management, in all related fields. We've got a thriving DECA organization here, led by Mrs. Mary Lou Tupper and Mr. Ed Santoro, who are both here tonight. Several of our student award winners, we wanted to take a little bit of time to recognize them, applaud them for all their hard work and efforts. So I'm going to turn it back over to Chairwoman Lacy, who has proclamations for each of our student winners. She's going to read the list of winners, and then we're going to ask our students to come up here, accept their awards, and then have a little photo op, so.
Okay, are we ready? All right, I'm going to start off with Alex Prist- you'll have to forgive me with names, because I'm not the-
He's next to me right now, he had a tennis match.
Okay, then I'll move-
He might be here by the time you finish all.
Okay, then we'll move on to Lily Farah.
Lily wasn't able to attend.
Okay. All right, you'll accept that on her behalf. Moving right along. Arrow Usak?
Use check.
Did I say that right? Just want to move right over there, we'll get a group photo after. Okay, let's see, Nevin Marisi?
Nevin's also at time, she's playing double, so she won't be able to-
Okay.
Most of our students are involved in so many different things.
Well, it's well-rounded, nothing wrong with that.
You definitely have your next three.
All right, so we have the team of Declan Costa, Leo Picard, and Ryan Tupper, second place in Innovation Plan. Declan, right? Declan, Leo, and Ryan. Okay, next we have Juliet Hanrahan, did I say that right? Okay. Third place in Human Resource Management. Congratulations, Juliet. Oh, next we have the team of Abigail Bassett, Aloka Hode, did I say that right? Okay, and Skylar Kellen? That was in Startup Business Plan, third place in Startup Business Plan. Aloka?
She's not here.
Okay. Skylar, congratulations, Skylar, and Abigail, congratulations. Okay, and next we have Ava LaFauci, third place Quick Serve Restaurant Management.
Ava wasn't able to be with us today.
Okay. Then how about Trenton Jowden? Trenton took third place in Sports Entertainment Marketing, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, did I get everybody?
Just didn't want to, just did want to mention that Arrow run the first place in Restaurant Food Service Management.
Yes, I'm sorry, I did skip that.
And then other award winners that are not here, Alex Prestala took first place in Financial Consulting, Lily Farah first place in Retail Merchandising, and Nevin was second place in Human Resources Management. So I think those are all our winners, so congratulations.
Congratulations, everyone.
We have two of those students here, Kenny Goshi and Chelsea Brown, who will also be representing Barville. They will be attending their Leadership Academies at the International Conference, so you're here tonight as well.
Oh, thank you for recognizing.
Congratulations.
Before we do, if you pass me a certificate, I just want to read what the certificate says on behalf of the school committee. So this is an official citation, it reads, be- Put my glasses on. Be hereby known to all that the Barville School Department offers its sincerest congratulations and best wishes in recognition of winning in the various awards of their various titles. Barville School Department salutes you in this tremendous accomplishment, go Broncos, given this eighth day of April, two thousand and twenty-five. So, Mr. Santoro or Mrs. Tupper, anything you want to say?
I wanted to add one thing, just a little flex for the school, is that Ava LaFauci is one of our seniors, will be attending Suffolk in the fall, and Alex Prestala is off to Cornell.
That's awesome.
Okay, thank you. Mary Lou and Ed, take a picture with the group.
And Trent, I'm sorry, Trent's my other C, Trent's heading to Bryant.
Right.
Nice.
Congratulations.
A plug for those who are not familiar with the program, so these students will be in attendance with about twenty thousand high school students from around the world. It's not just from America, Canada, Guam, Puerto Rico, just to name a few, Spain, Germany. So they are going to be amongst, you know, very high-level students as well as themselves, so this is a really, it's an honor to take them. I've been doing this for a really long time, and I love doing it, so here we go.
I have a question.
I want to add one more thing, this is Tupper, who's also the state advisor for DECA, she runs the entire state and all the other areas. So when we head off to Orlando, where our students are becoming part of the state of Rhode Island competing, so they won, of course, for Barville, but they're going to be competing statewide now as a state of Rhode Island.
Can I ask a question? You started with the states, right? And they won states, or some of the states, and then you went to D. C.?
No, D. C. was a leadership conference.
Okay.
That was all leadership training. So this, because we are a smaller state, we only have a state conference, and they, these winners go on to the national conference. Larger states like as close as New Jersey, Pennsylvania, they have, and Massachusetts, they have districts, they win there, then they go to the state conference, win there, and then go to nationals. But because we're smaller, we don't have those smaller versions.
So they, this, they won all of these throughout the state?
For the state.
Pretty good.
Yeah, they competed over, we have about six hundred, almost seven hundred kids at our state conference.
Terrific.
Sure. I'd be honored. You pretended to.
What about them, what about me?
You want to give the answers?
Okay, okay, ready, I'm going to let all our parents off and take pictures, so we'll start here, one, two, three. Thank you, any other parents, family members. All right, thank you very much.
Congratulations, everyone.
Hey, we're here.
Take another pic.
All right, hurry up, over there, come this way. Go that way.
I think you should take another photo, too.
Yeah, I think they're gonna.
How about Alex?
Alex Prestala.
I'll present you with something.
Yeah, oh, first, okay, Alex, you were first, and you've missed it now. First place in Financial Consultant, congratulations, that's, that's-
I wonder if he won his tennis match.
Okay. I'm okay, all right, one, two, three.
Delete the elements.
The whole thing.
It's so busy.
That's not a bad thing.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mary Lou, appreciate it.
Right here. Wait a few minutes and let them-
We gave it to Mr. Santoro. Oh, Mrs. Tupper. All right, you ready?
Lots of Tuppers around here, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
As always.
Moving on, we're going to go to agenda item number four, presentation by the public to the school committee. Do we have anybody here?
We have no presentation scheduled tonight.
All right. Item number five, agenda item number five, public comment. Anybody here for public comment? No? Okay. Moving right along, agenda item number six, personnel, leave of absences, leaves of absence, retirement, resignation, and appointments.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the leave of absence for Talia Lynch, health technology teacher, A. T. Levy, William L. Callahan, effective August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five through November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Let's just start with that one.
Second.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'll also make a motion to approve the retirement with great thanks, Lisa Scotty Johnson, special education teacher, Barville High School, effective August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second that. Motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
She was thirty-something years.
I know, I would like to give immense thanks to Lisa Scotty Johnson for all that she's done for this district and my family.
She was there a long time.
Thirty-six years.
Thirty-six years.
I, that's why I went, if anybody heard that, because I didn't realize it was officially official, so.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the resignations of Natalie Bellino, National Junior Honor Society, Barville Middle School, effective March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, also Kyle Benoit, Information Systems Analyst, effective March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, and Edward Dunn, Special Education Teacher, Barville High School, effective March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
And I just want to ask, going back to retirements, Christine just pointed out to me, I didn't ask for, the motion was made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia, and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll also make a motion to receive and file the subsequent appointments.
Second.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
I have a question, though, can I ask a question? A special ed teacher for Barville High School, the effect, it was effective March thirty-first, do we have someone in that classroom?
Yes, there's someone in that classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, non-renewals, we have thirty-nine non-renewals. I'm sorry, what?
Thirty-one.
I'm sorry, thirty-one, I'm looking at my page, I wrote down.
Well, this is the tough one, but it's unfortunately how we have to handle this. So, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the non-renewals as presented.
And I'll second.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia?
Give you a little background on the discussion, if you'd like, I was going to say this on my report, but prior to the vote, I might as well say it now.
Okay.
As you see, we have a number of teacher non-renewals on the agenda tonight, there are thirty-one of them, all non-tenure teachers in the school district, and those teachers that are least senior in the certification area are being non-renewed or laid off due to budget, budget uncertainty. There are three teachers on the list that are tenured, the rest are non-tenured. As you know, this is the worst part of the job of a school superintendent. We truly do not want to lose any of our educators, it's a painstaking process as we go through the budget and try to balance the difficulty of funding a public school budget, facing the realities that we face every day with both, you know, national and state concerns, as well as local constraints, so it's a really difficult position that we're in. It's not anything that's unique to Barville, this is being played out in many districts in our state and across the country, but it's a unfortunate reality, really, of what's happening in public education. So, last year we had thirty, thirty-nine teacher non-renewals, we were able to recall the vast majority of those. Our proposed budget includes eliminating ten teaching positions for next school year, so that is part of the reason why there are so many layoffs, but it's also really because we don't know what our budget's going to look like, so we really need some flexibility for budgetary, budgetary purposes. However, due to retirements and teacher movement, we're hoping ultimately, even though ten teaching positions will be eliminated, this will really only impact a handful of folks, but we really don't know what, you know, what positions that, that's going to impact yet until we have an approved budget, and we know, you know, which classes our kids are going to need next year, and what our enrollment looks like in different areas. So, again, it's the worst, worst part of the job for any superintendent, but it's a necessary one. So, we hope to recall the vast majority of these teachers as soon as we have an approved budget for fiscal year twenty-six. Typically, that happens sometimes in June, sometime in June, and then we either have a special meeting or have it at the June meeting where we recall as many teachers as possible. But again, with the ten teaching positions eliminated, where we know that it's going to impact some people, but we're hoping to limit that to potentially four or five people at most.
Thank you, Dr. Salito. Again, motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item number seven, all business fiscal year twenty-five, Barville School District Budget Update and Transfer Approval.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to receive and file the proposed budget and also approve the transfers as recommended.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then fiscal year twenty-five, Rink Budget Update.
Also make a motion to receive and file.
Second that.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, agenda item number eight, the Superintendent's Report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Salito.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, just have a few items to report tonight. Begin with some elementary news, actually, before I begin, I just want to take a moment, ask the committee, there was a really bad traffic accident today on Wallem Lake Road that, I think any of us that were here when that, that news broke about the accident, we know it's a pretty significant one, so just wanted to convey my thoughts and prayers with anyone who's impacted by that accident, I know there was a medevac, a helicopter was involved, and we're hoping that everyone is okay, but wanted to put that on the, on the record. It's, anytime you see those kind of things, you, it gives you a chance to pause and reflect a little bit. So hopefully, everybody involved in that accident is okay, but our thoughts and prayers with those families that may be, may be impacted.
Thank you, Dr. Salito.
So, as you know, moving on, at A. T. Levy, Mrs. Thompson is retiring as principal at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. On behalf of the Barville School Department, I extend obviously our sincere gratitude to her for over thirty years of service to Barville schools and families. She will be missed by our Levy family and certainly leaves big shoes to fill. To this end, I recently met with Mr. Brissette and requested that he serve as principal of the Austin T. Levy School beginning in July of two thousand and twenty-five. After careful consideration, he's agreed to do so, transitioning to this role for next school year and beyond. We all know Mr. Brissette is well-respected by staff, parents, families, and everyone here in town. So his ability to forge and maintain strong relationships with kids, with families, with community members is really a strength that he'll bring to Levy as he takes on this new challenge. Certainly will be missed by, by his William L. Callahan family, but we know that he will continue the many excellent initiatives happening at Levy each and every day. So we'll be posting for the Callahan principal position later this week, and plan to have a rigorous search for the next principal, and hopefully we'll have some really highly skilled and qualified people for that position. Parents were informed of this at both Levy and Callahan, staff was informed earlier last week, and then we sent parent letters home as well. So they're aware that transition will take place in July. Moving on, the NEAS visiting team will be coming to the high school beginning of May. As you know, this is a decennial visit, every ten years we get visited, it's an enormous undertaking. Kudos to our hard-working staff at the high school, they've been working on this for well over a year. The committee is, it's changed, the process has changed in probably the last half dozen years or so. It's not as, the committee that they send isn't as large as it used to be, and the way that the visit takes place is a little bit different than our last one ten, ten years ago. So I just wanted to mention that and give some kudos to the team, and also mention that on Monday, May fifth, at six P. M., school committee members are invited for an interview with the NEAS Visiting Committee, so please mark your calendars for that. And finally, we have received two bids for a feasibility study, to look at our current school buildings and provide potential options for either school consolidation, or school construction, construction rather, school restructuring, or any other option. So, as you recall, this was something that we discussed several meetings ago. We put a request for proposals together and sent that out publicly, we received two bids for those proposals. The cheapest bid was, or lowest bid was for seventy-five thousand dollars, the second bid was for a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. So our next step in the process would be to present the bids to the town council, to determine if there is funding available, and if there is a desire from the town to move forward with the study at this price, I mean, it's a significant price, or if the council would prefer to delay things until we have a better idea of budgetary implications. So I'll be reaching out to the town manager this week to determine next steps and decide if he would like me to present this to the town council, and if so, when that would take place. So I'll keep you posted as that develops, but did want to mention about those two bids. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Salito. Okay, moving on, agenda, agenda item number nine, Administrator's Report.
Make a motion to receive and file, again with great thanks, as always, appreciate all the hard work and the effort putting this together, too, so.
Second.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Jill, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Agenda item number ten, report from the school committee's student representative.
A little bit to report today, I was unable to attend the last two Barville High School sit meetings due to driver's education, but I have a little bit of nice things to report, I guess, that's been going on at the high school. So the week of March eighteenth to the twenty-second, we had a unified week at Barville High School. Starting with Monday, we had a unified pledge during lunches, unified athletes encourage students to sign the pledge, promising to always include others and have respect for individuals with intellectual disabilities. That Tuesday, we had the unified basketball game versus teachers, I was in the dome, it was very funny to watch the teachers, and Mr. Lazareti was playing. That was, that was funny.
He didn't hurt himself then, did he? No.
He was, he was running pretty fast.
Did he have a sweatband?
It would have been funny for him. Former P. E. teacher, Mr. Laz.
Yeah.
To do with the unified team to continue, that was all I had to report for that week, those are like only two, like, days, but we had like a little spirit week that week. Unified basketball team, five consecutive wins. That, actually, when I was typing that, sorry, correct, they did have a five consecutive, they won the last one, but actually today-
They won again, yeah.
I think forty-three, forty-five.
Yeah.
Two, two points.
Against Central Falls, yeah.
Central Falls was in wait.
Yeah.
And that Saturday was, March twenty-second, was the polar plunge, I attended myself, I raised over two hundred dollars, and I plunged in the water, forty degrees.
Oh.
Twice, actually.
Really?
My girlfriend made me go in a second time. Fortunately, Ms. Walsh dropped her phone, and the Cumberland Search and Rescue had to go in the water.
No.
They did find it, and it was, it was intact, too, she had like a wicked reinforced, like, thick case and saved her phone.
That's great.
Wow.
In total, Barville raised two thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars for Special Olympics, and half of those go to our unified teams, and the other half goes to Special Olympics Rhode Island.
Awesome.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, it is good.
That's really great, yeah.
My last thing is, we recognize DECA, I would like to recognize Skills USA, since I'm a part of the organization. March twenty-first was the last of our competitions, we hosted Urban Search and Rescue and Chapter Display, and April second, at six P. M. at the Vets Auditorium, we recognized and got our medals for, and see who won what competitions. And I would like to recognize those who won, so special congratulations to our gold medalists, starting with middle school, urban search and rescue. Unfortunately, their names are not there, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I put the thing down, I got your email, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Must have forgot. But Career Pathways, Industrial Engineering and Technology, our gold medalist Benjamin Pina, Wyatt Wayland, and Shanzanella. We got first, going to nationals, thank you.
Nice.
Chapter Display, Jasari Cedar, Ellen McCarthy, Spencer Wayland, Cabinet Making, Joshua Cookson, Emergency Medical Technician, Avery Johnson, Olivia Ferraro, and our last one, Robotics Urban Search and Rescue High School, Logan Gomez and Ace Marengo. So those teams will be going to compete in nationals June twenty-second, it's usually around that date, in Atlanta, Georgia.
Very nice.
And just for the record, our Skills USA Robotics Urban Search and Rescue Middle School Team had a sweep, bronze medal winners were Sophia Page and Alexis Mihen. Silva was Luke Farah and Cooper Levin, and Tyler Karabuchi, and Brandon Levin took the gold. So a sweep for our middle school, kudos to them and to Mrs. Lapierre for advising our middle school chapter.
They're good, I had a chance to judge that urban search and rescue here in the media center, those kids are on point, and then you see these middle school kids come up, and they're moving just as fast, you know, with, with the equipment they built. It's, it's one of my favorite days, it's turning into one of my favorite days to be there with them and see what they do. It's unreal, even some of the, the law enforcement personnel that were here, were blown away, so always a great day. Anything that the Skills USA kids do, they do a wonderful job, so I can attest to that.
Our students are doing some amazing things, aren't they?
They are.
Wow, making us proud constantly. Okay, so. Agenda item number eleven, reports of school committee subcommittees.
So I was able to attend the Skills USA Awards Night and see this gentleman get his award, and it was, I'll just start off by saying, I always try to get there early, it's how I was raised, and Mr. Pillings said that if you don't get there, there's only so much room for seats.
Yeah.
Made it there early enough, I'm the worst seat, but when I got there, you could see some of the other- you could see some of the other towns where there's few kids. Barville, the six rows of seats, or four rows of seats that they had across the theater was full. I mean, it was virtually full, but all the kids were there, and I was like, wow. And duly so, 'cause to watch the event, the hoopla and how they put it on is, I mean, it had to make you feel awesome. I mean, with the music and the lights and the, and then to see the sweep of the middle school and all the other awards that happened. It just reinforces why, you know, we, we push for the CTE programs and the importance behind them. It was, some of, some of the awards, I had to look up, 'cause it wasn't ones that Barville won, but they were, Extem, Mike, what was that, Extemperania?
Extemperania speaking is a category.
I thought it was maybe public speaking, but.
It covers a full range of skills.
Yeah, and it was, it was really, really good to attend as a second year I went. And it's, I recommend if anybody can go, if you can, if you can make the night, it's, you know, it's about two, two and a half hours, but it was, it was absolutely awesome to see the kids get their awards and how excited they were. The second item I'd like to comment on is I was able to attend the high school sit committee back there, earlier April, it was the second. I've got to tell you that to watch how it's progressed in the years that I've been on it and the membership and the stakeholders, what I mean by stakeholders is, I mean, we have parents on it, we have students. It's just, it's really well-rounded, and it's, it's thought out. I mean, every meeting that you go to, they reinforce talking about the vision of a graduate, and all facets of, everybody's commented on the vision of a graduate. And it's clear that the team is well-oiled and actively planning, so they, they create their goals and they'll circle back around and look at them. I want to thank everybody that's on the sit committee and Principal Lazarek, because he's done a great job in leadership of keeping it together and making it grow. And I think it's really important to have that vision, so.
And good luck to all the seniors that are doing their presentations tomorrow. Yeah.
Thank you, Sean. Does anybody have anything?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I do have one. There was no meeting, Barville extended care this month, it'll be next month, but I just wanted to share that they have been, announced that they are a three-star rating by Great Stars. I guess all three locations were recognized, so it's a great accomplishment. It shows that, you know, we're being recognized for the good work that they do, so. Just wanted to share that with the committee.
Again, making Barville proud constantly.
Always winning.
Anybody else?
And I did not attend the sit committee for Stair Farm, and I was sent the notes, but I haven't had a chance to look at them. That April 2nd meeting would be their last meeting for this year. I will report next, next time, next month.
That's fine.
I have a few things, Terry.
Okay.
So, I, on March 13th, we had the BZAC meeting, which is the Barville Special Education Advisory Council. I hope I said that right. Matt Raymond from the Department of Health gave a presentation on this Rhode Island Special Needs Emergency Registry, which is a voluntary statewide registry that identifies Rhode Islanders with disabilities, chronic conditions, behavioral health, and other special healthcare needs. It was very interesting. He gave instructions on what qualifies a family for this registry and how to enroll. If anyone wants more information, I'm happy to email you the link to the meeting. Dave Alba also announced that BZAC has a new president. Her name is Tatiana Cologne. He had some wonderful things to say about her. In addition to her being a fierce advocate for her child, Tatiana serves as the district's bilingual resource, resource support specialist. Through her work across our schools with English learners and their families and providing staff support, she has a unique perspective that has, that greatly benefits BZAC. So, warm welcome to her. Sounds like she wants to increase parent engagement, so she's gonna make a Facebook page. I imagine she's gonna work with Maria on that. So, you can always email her if you want more information.
I think it's already up and running.
Oh, good. Perfect. I mean, I don't doubt you for a second, Maria, I'm sure it is. And then on March 19th was the BMS, the middle school, school improvement team meeting. I wasn't able to attend, but I did get the notes. It sounds like they're really remaining strong with the cell phone policy. Things seem to be going really well with that. They're having like competitions and stuff like that, so that's always good. They're gonna have a read-a-thon, walk-a-thon at the end of April, early May. They're thinking of charging an entry fee that would, that would go towards possibly buying some picnic tables and umbrellas. You hear anything about that?
Not yet.
So, and then they just went over all of the end-of-the-year activities, which there's a lot, you know, coming up. So, next meeting is May 21st at 2:15. That's all I have for that.
Thank you, Jill. I can't believe we're discussing end of the year.
I can't either.
Jeez.
And I have a senior, so slow down time.
I just want to remind everybody that the Rhode Island Association of School Committee Annual Meeting is May 3rd at the Crown Plaza. If you plan on attending, Judy would like you to email her and let her know that you're gonna be attending. And did, did you receive the email from Judy? 'Cause if you haven't, I can, I can forward it to you, if anybody hasn't received it.
I forwarded it to the, to the group as well.
All right. And the Austin T. Levy didn't have a SIT meet in this month, so I have nothing to report on that. Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you. Moving on, agenda item number 12, correspondence and communications. Resolution of the One-Socket School Committee, transportation of private school students.
So, Madam Chair, if I could speak to these.
Sure.
We have four resolutions tonight. One-Socket School Committee, Knott Smithfield School Committee, we have one from the Rhode Island Association of School Committees in Portsmouth, all related to school transportation, and they're all very similar to the resolution that we passed at our last meeting. So, just looking for a motion to receive and file. All of them are calling for the state to basically give the transportation money from private school students to kind of move that over to offset the cost of transportation for homeless students. They have their own particular numbers and how they're impacted, but all of these resolutions are very similar to the one that was passed by the Barville School Committee last month.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Salito.
I have a question. I have a question?
Sure.
Have they, do we know what their decision is, or are they still?
They've yet to make a decision. General Assembly needs to vote on that.
Thank you.
I guess I'll ask, what monetary benefit do we think? Do we have a ballpark?
For, for Barville, if the, if the private school money is reallocated to the homeless school, homeless students, it would be approximately $151,000 for Barville, for FY '26.
So, motion received and filed.
Second.
Motion made by Donison, second by Jill, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Agenda item number 13, new business, homeschool applications.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Donison, second by Jill, all in favor?
Aye.
Policy number 4320, purchasing, first revised reading.
I make a motion to approve.
Any discussion?
You can make a second.
Motion made by Sylvia, second by Donison, all in favor?
Aye.
And then policy number 7314, school wellness, first revised reading.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Sylvia, second by Jill, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, agenda item number 14, committee comments on agenda items. Does anybody have any discussion?
No.
I just want to say, I brought my, my eighty dollars, I'm gonna contribute for the DECA out of my pocket to offset the.
Very nice, thank you.
School budget issues we've got, so.
Thank you, Donison. Sometimes I come to these meetings and we see these students coming before us, and I don't know about the rest years, but I'm so proud of our kids. They work so hard, and, and I'm just so proud of their achievements, so. I just like to put that out there, they really, really work hard at what they do, so. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, moving on, agenda item number 15, pending issues, the artificial turf, artificial field update.
We have no update at this time.
No update at this time. Space needs update, space needs committee update.
So, we'll be potentially convening the, the first meeting of the space needs committee pending approval of the proposal from the feasibility study. So, the next step would be to, as I said earlier in the meeting, would be to bring that feasibility study to the council, and if they want to fund that, then we'll have a first meeting of that committee. So, I'll keep you posted. I'll be reaching out to the town manager tomorrow to have a discussion about that.
All right, moving on, agenda item number 16, adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Sylvia, second by Jill, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.